Okay, good evening. Welcome to the December 11th Select Board Meeting. Francine Tishman, Jim Labrie, and Matt Rowland, and I'm John Martin. We're being recorded live, correct, Ryan?
Yep.
And we're also, we're going out live and we're being recorded, I guess is the way we want to put it. So we're gonna have the Pledge of Allegiance if you could all join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, I just wanted, I don't know if you folks know or went, but there was an auction at the Norris School, the Mother's Club, and I went to it, I think it was last Friday. It was, I haven't been to one since my kids were small. It was a great event to go to, and they did a great job. People just bid everything up. And I, and I, and I won something that I hope the Chief of Police is, is watching. So I'm gonna give, I'm gonna give the Chief a call. And hopefully, instead of work, it's our, the school is to work, but if he's out there, I'll be calling it, Chief, so. But it was a great event, so I just wanted to say something about that. Okay, so we have some appointments. Lucy Dalton, Public Records Access Officer, term to expire May 21st, 2019. Lucy recently took over as the interim town clerk, and I know she's in there working. You wanna do all these appointments at one time, or? Sure, okay. Gloria York, Finance Committee, term to expire May 21st, 2019. She is the fourth member of the Finance Committee, they're looking for one more. Do we have any more applications then?
On the way, Gloria York.
Oh, hi, how are you?
Yes, sir.
I came to say hello.
I'm sorry, you wanna come up and introduce yourself? My apologies.
Up here?
Yes, no, right there.
Right, okay.
Just name and where you live.
Gloria York, I live on Maple Street, 74 Maple Street. I'm looking forward to joining the Finance Committee and helping out.
Good, we're looking forward to it.
Great.
Any questions for us, or?
No, actually, I've had experience. I used to be Town Accountant, Assistant Town Accountant in Southwick, so I used to go to the meetings. And so I'm used to the process, and I worked in accounting, so I'm ready to sit there and help our town.
That's good, we really appreciate it.
Yeah, anything you need to, sit there and show me, let me know.
Okay, you know John Labrie is the Chair of the Finance Committee?
No, I haven't met everyone yet. I'm gonna sit there next meeting, get to know everyone real well.
I attend meetings, so we'll see you then. They're upstairs on the second floor?
They're tonight, or Monday night?
No, it was last night.
Right, okay.
And I think it's in two weeks, but just go to our town website and they're all posted.
Sure, great.
Good, look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you had, just remember, you have to get sworn in.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that during the day, another time, or not tonight?
You can do it tonight.
Okay.
Lucy's in there.
Well, she doesn't have, she doesn't have her paperwork, so.
Once we approve the paperwork.
I live up the street, it's easy enough.
All right.
Okay, thanks. Now, we have a resignation from the COA Board of Dorothy Putnam, resignation. Jana, are you gonna read a letter?
Yes.
Yep, Jana Kane's the Chair of the COA.
Yes, Jana Kane, Glendale Road, Chair of the Council on Aging Board. We received a letter from Dorothy regarding her resignation, or we like to say her retirement, quite honestly. Effective immediately, I'm sorry, but the time has come for me to leave the Southampton COA. I have been on the Board for 10 to 11 years, and I've enjoyed the members like they were family. Much has been accomplished recently, and that makes me very happy. I am positive the Board members we have now are very capable of handling any issue that arises. I will be at the Senior Center for many happenings, and will be just a visitor once in a while also. It's my home away from home. Please feel free to call me if you ever need my help on anything I already have. Sincerely, Dottie Putnam.
It sounds like she's staying in town.
Oh, yeah, yeah, she's, 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 I, a couple words, a couple years ago when we, our Director resigned, and we were kind of in interim, but it was about two years ago. Dorothy, who was in her 80s and used to be the Director of the COA in Great Barrington many years ago, stepped in and volunteered for over two months to be the Director of the Senior Center, and was there keeping the place alive. And we just so appreciate everything she's done for the Center and all the knowledge she brought. And when we decided to add alternates to our Board, it gave her the ability to feel that she could step down and without leaving an opening, and we very much appreciate her. And I just wanna thank her and look forward to seeing her at the Center and, and as many times as possible, so. Thanks, Dorothy.
Yes, thank you Dorothy from the Board.
If you're watching.
Okay, now we have Yvonne Batty Davis, COA Board Term to Expire June 30th, 2019, which is the balance of Dorothy Putnam's unexpired term. And I know, Yvonne, you are here. Would you like to come up and just introduce yourself?
This is pretty good. Hello, I'm Yvonne Batty Davis, and I live on Middle Road in Southampton. And glad to be part of this Board. It's been kind of a whirlwind from being chosen as an alternate to now, wait a minute, what happened here?
How long were you an alternate?
A week, no. About a month.
So it was that short, huh?
It was that short, it was that short.
You didn't realize that would happen once you started, huh?
No, I didn't.
Yeah, it did, yeah. But thank you for joining, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any questions for us?
No, no questions.
You got great leadership, so.
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, thank you.
And I, your resume, your background in, in healthcare and age-related limitations is gonna be a big help to the organization, I think. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, hearings, we have none.
Well, are we gonna appoint them?
Yes, we probably do that, huh?
Yes, we have to do that.
Am I trying to make the meeting go too fast?
Okay.
So we need a motion to appoint all three above.
Show them.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I just ask, Ed, is the other resignation gonna be the next time around? From the Park Commission to the Open Space, Sonia Hood, Park?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that was cryptic, but as long as you two know.
Now that I actually have a physical letter doing that.
Okay, now hearings, none. Reports, Select Board. Renae, you wanna start?
Sure, let me just get that file. Not really a lot. Conservation Commission, as usual, NOI, site visits, hearings, very busy, busy committee. They are looking at forest cutting and also trail maintenance. There'll be some more information coming to the Board relative to that. They continue to, you know, hope that something will happen with the roof at the Zipta Barn, not just for protection of wind, but also water. So I don't know if that's, if there's any updates on that, Ed. Open Space, I'll let John, because he went to the last meeting, I wasn't able to. And then Council of Aging met last Wednesday, bylaws review. They're planning a program at the Southampton Senior Center in conjunction with DOPA FIT, which is a movement disorders group that's across at the Red Rock Plaza. They also, I don't know, Jen, if you, they did a theater, I think, reschedule program last Friday, and then watch the newsletter for upcoming trips. There's one planned for MGM. Anything else?
No, I, I, I've heard terrific things about the murder mystery evening. It was dinner murder mystery event, theater event, and just great feedback from everybody that participated. I wasn't able to go, but should've joined it after the auction, John. It was, they said they left the entire night, so thank you to Joan for bringing that. That's a new activity for us, so.
Great. And then Community Preservation meets on the 2nd of January. Anything else?
Matt?
Board of Health is meeting in 20 minutes. No updates from the last meeting. CAP Committee hasn't met yet, but I imagine that will pick up relatively soon. And that's all I have to report.
Okay, Francine?
Okay, on November 28th, I went to the East Hampton Media Center to meet the new Executive Director and to tour their facilities, and I get, I'm pretty excited about the resources that they can make available to us, and hopefully some joint programming to keep our town apprised of, of things going on. I think it's a great, it's a great way to communicate and to educate. Then also on November 28th, I attended the Norris School Committee Meeting. A union spokesperson read a statement on behalf of the Union. I won't go into the details of that, but other than to say that there is a request for mediation out there. The business manager of the school reported relatively small amount of transfers for office supplies and custodial supplies, both under a hundred, under $1,000. They anticipate the possibility of an increase of approximately $25,000, $20,000 in special education costs this year. An audience member asked what other schools were doing about solar energy to address the utility costs of the school, raised an excellent point. The business manager reviewed a list of capital improvements for next fiscal year, and we're up to like $130,000 so far, so that's good to keep in mind for finance and for the Select Board. They continue, they have a subcommittee that continues to deliberate on the security camera policy that they'll be looking at. They did pass the homeschool policy, and the Superintendent discussed the animals in school policy and said it's a state law to include service animals. Then on December 3rd, I attended the Hampshire Regional High School Meeting. There was a donation made by the Kevs Foundation in memory of Kevin Major, who passed away from sudden cardiac arrest. He's the grandson of a town resident. The family set up a foundation to provide automated, automated external defibrillators to schools, and they donated to the Hampshire Regional. One will be housed at the school, and the other will travel with the traveling sports teams, because off-site, they need, they need the equipment. It's just as important there as it is to have it in the, in the building. The Superintendent Building and Principal of the High School will be coming to the Select Board on January 3rd to provide an in-depth budget report, and you will get more information on that. Again, the, the security camera policy is also still in committee for the Hampshire Regional, as it is in Norris. Animals in schools, again, a policy under review. They did approve a policy on breathalyzer use after much deliberation. They demonstrated, and there is a discussion about anonymous reporting system that they'll be looking at for students and others. The high school received a small grant that will partially cover the cost of walkie-talkies in the school with, that will have a direct link to the West Hampton Police. The grant also includes one walkie-talkie for each school, each elementary school in the district as an enhancement. And at our joint meeting, when they come in January, we should be discussing ways, cost-saving measures, and joint efforts to encourage our state reps to increase support of local school budgets. The next meeting for the Regional High School was January 7th. I do wanna make a comment, though. We had a presentation from Smith Vocational Board Chair and Superintendent at the last meeting, and I was very surprised to hear that North Hampton who, Board, North Hampton residents are 100%, comprise the Board 100% at Smith. But to find out that only 20% of the students at Smith are from North Hampton, and 80% of the students enrolled at Smith are from other districts. And I was just, I, I would like to make an inquiry of the Smith Vocational Board of Directors and make a recommendation that perhaps if everyone here agrees, that we ask them to set up an advisory council, if they don't already have one, of the sending school districts' representation. Because 80, 80/20, I would like to hear, maybe Tammy has some insight into that, I?
Tammy, Wellunis 298 College Highway. The school does have an advisory board, and it sends out letters to students and parents that have involvement with the school. Like, my husband had two co-op kids from there. So he gets a meeting, he can go to those meetings and give insight for Southampton. And there's other representatives that go to that.
But I would like to see representation from our Educational Administration on the Advisory Committee to represent the interests of the town and, and the students on the advisory council.
Do you know how the select members to the Advisory Committee now?
No, I do not.
That's what you really wanna find out.
That's what I would like to find out, and that's what I, you know, would like to propose to them. Okay, that, that's the, and then?
Do you want us to do some action on that for you now? I'm okay with Francine following through and finding out how the Advisory Board is set up and what the input is and the possibility of us having representation. Does anybody object to that?
No.
I have no problem.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just ask a question? Oh, when you're done.
Okay. And then finally, last night, December 10th, was the Master Plan Implementation Committee. You heard the, the report at our last meeting from the Chair, Meg Rosenberg. I'm really happy to say we have a full Board with very active participation. I think that's great. We're still in the process of developing a work plan, which will be presented to the Select Board and then ultimately to the town. And I wanna thank Barbara Lashlam, who attends the meetings regularly, and really gives us a lot of, a lot of good information and insight, having been part of the Master Plan Committee in, in the past. So thank you, Barbara. Next meeting of that group is January 14th, and public is invited. Thank you.
I just had a question about what you said about the sports teams and the AED. So they're going on away games with them. I'm just wondering, do you know offhand who's responsible for the AED? And are the, all the coaches AED and CPR trained?
I think, and, and I, I don't know intimately, I'm not familiar with all of the elements of the foundation and its work, but I do believe that included in that is training of staff and students and the use of the equipment, as well as the identifica, early warning signs.
Okay.
So there is some training along with that.
Jim?
What I have is, the Planning Board met on December 5th, and we held our public hearing on the Marijuana Bylaw for Recreation. And pretty much the turnout was about seven or eight people, and all of them were town employees. Nothing was changed from what was advertised and published, so that'll be moving forward to the Select Board to be put in the next, for the town meeting.
Yeah, Francine, Matt, and I were there also, and it was a very interesting presentation, I thought. It was kind of a re, rehash of what was there, but it was?
We had Larry Smith from the PVPC there, and pretty much went over in detail the entire bylaw, explaining it.
It's, it's gonna be interesting when it gets to the town meeting.
Well, it's important to accept one way or the other. I think the townspeople should, if they can get a copy of it on the website, it'd be really important to understand it, because you really wanna have a bylaw in place to have control. Otherwise, there will be no control, and it'll be able to be, we have a lot of guidelines in there, you know, how close to a school or other facilities, and I think it's important to have that. So if people can pick it up, understand it, read it before the town meeting, and if they have, it can be amended on the floor. So if they don't like something in the, in the bylaw, I believe you can amend it on the floor and go from there.
Now, and Ed was at the meeting, too. We have a copy of it up on the website, but there was a couple minor changes. So will those be uploaded and with the changes?
Well, there was a typo, I know, for something, and, there was a distance. It was, with the one change you may find, I, I believe we said it can be 50% of the liquor, amount of liquor stores. I think that was one of them. So when it comes to how many retail sales facilities can we have? And the bylaw was, it says 50% of your alcohol licenses in town. Not use, but we're saying sales, like this, right to Town Plaza next to Pezzano's or up by Big Y. I think there's three in town, which would allow us two recreational marijuana ones, but, um, that was one of the changes that was, I think it was at 20% in, in what was posted. I think that change was made.
Right.
It will be made, right?
So we could have up to two retail licenses, because you round up on, on all those, so.
Correct.
Okay. But definitely get a chance to go out there and read it, it's very interesting. When it comes to the town meeting, you wanna be well-versed on it. Anything else, Jim?
No, that's all I have.
Okay, well, they had the, we had the Finance Committee last night. It was a short meeting, but they approved several PCFs and PRFs, which we'll go over a little later in the agenda. And the Open Space Review Committee, Diana Fetterman volunteered to do a, a letter of interest for an Outreach Pilot Project Grant for $10,700. So she did the final paperwork, sent it to me. I signed it as Chair of the Open Space Committee, and we sent it out on Monday. So hopefully we'll get $10,700 as a grant. And also, Mark Wamsley from the Kestrel Trust has volunteered to update the biomaps. Let me just read how it is. He volunteered to make us a new map of the entire town showing natural resources and protected lands. And Diana's gonna ask the assessors if they have a map of the chapter land, so bless you. So hopefully that'll, that'll save us some money as we go along. And those are the three meetings I attended, so, Ed, you wanna go over your report?
Certainly. Let's see, first, the interim Police Chief's position has been posted internally. And the staff has asked if the Town Hall would be closing early on Christmas Eve. I haven't been here before, but I am told this has been a decision that's been made by the Select Board on a year-to-year basis. I attended a site visit requested by the State for the Drinking Water Protection Grant. We applied for, for the 15 acres on Pomeroy Meadow Road. Emmanuel Awuza from the State, and Kurt Bojolay from the Water Commissioners, in addition to Diana Fetterman, Christina Madsen, and myself, attended the hour-long site visit and tour of the property. I attended a cybersecurity all-day seminar at UMass in Amherst last Wednesday. The seminar was put on by members of the FBI, Massachusetts State Agencies, private organizations, and the State Police, Police, to list a few. The seminar was well-done and was extremely eye-opening. PVPC has announced the DLTA Local Assistance Grants are out for application. We will have to list our priorities, as these are the grants which may fund the updated open space and recreation plan, IT network audit and analysis, and the Barnes-Aquafirm Group Establishment, which the Water Department has had preliminary conversations about funding the development of a new agreement. And usually it will get one award, and then later in the year, if they have funds left, you might get a second. Blanchard and Daly has, have completed the actual wiring of the electrical circuit and adding the light for the American flag in front of the Town Hall, which is being funded through the Community Preservation Funds. The temporary Assistant Town Clerk position has been posted. We have not had any applications back as of yet, and we have received our permanent yearly elevator permit as Bay State Elevator has come in and reprogrammed the emergency phone, which is in the elevator. The next special project I'll be working on is finding a qualified consultant to perform the feasibility envelope study evaluation of the police station with Old Town Hall and East Street. Tom Quinlan, our Building Inspector, Building Commissioner, has suggested a roofing company to contact to nail the loose metal roof panels on the Zipta Barn. I have called and left a message to see if they will take a look at the barn, give us a price for the repairs, and if possible, perform the work before the snow and ice sets in for this winter. Upcoming December Select Board Meetings, we have one left Thursday, December 20th, and then January Select Board Meetings are scheduled for Thursday, January 3rd, and Tuesday's the 8th and the 22nd.
Did you wanna give an update on your admin system?
Actually, I think I've got it as an agenda item.
Okay, so you wanna wait for that?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I don't know if this is the proper time. When are we gonna talk about the special town meeting? I have a lot of people asking me when that's gonna happen, so, just curious.
We can put it under Business I Can't Wait, how's that?
There we go, okay.
Okay, old business, 111 Glendale Road. Mid, mid-December, we don't have anything yet back about the grant, so we're still on a holding pattern on that, unless somebody else has heard something, no?
When should we have an answer?
Well, they said at the earliest December.
Should be any day now.
Yeah. At the earliest is the scary part, hopefully. From what Mark Wamsley said, December is usually the time that you get that information, so I think we all keyed on that, so hopefully it comes through. But we're, we're keeping in contact with them. Fiscal year, 19 budget and expenditures review. Did we get a new one this week?
No.
No, we're in the, we're in the off week, yeah.
Off week, yeah.
Hampshire Regional Budget and Expenditure Agreement, we haven't done anything with that yet either. Anything on the MS Stormwater? Or is that just placeholder for now?
No, I've actually put it on here as just a reminder. We did take approximately, or utilized, part of one of the accounts in Randall's budget to fund the $8,000 to get the permit application done and actually receive our permit. There's still about a $28,000 balance of work, which is this, or I shouldn't say 28, about $24,000 balance of work, which we should accomplish before the end of the fiscal year to stay in compliance with that. So I just put it here as a, kind of a reminder that we might look at possibly special town meeting to either appropriate some funds for that, or we would have to deplete the Highway Department budget further to stay in compliance with our MS4 requirements for the year.
Okay, so nothing we're doing with that tonight?
No.
Okay, Public Access TV, Stanton Media, budget adjustment. Francine, you said you went to meet the?
Right, I, we had no discussion about this, and I have no information. I don't even, other than seeing it on the agenda, Ed?
And don't we have her coming in, in early January, the new Director?
Just supposed to. This is on here again as a tickler for the special town meeting. One piece of the puzzle, when we changed our accounting methodology for paying East Hampton Media, we actually made it a budget item instead of the revenue reserve for appropriation, because we actually had to previously wait to actually get the check and have the funds, and then wait for a town meeting to appropriate it, at least for the third and fourth quarters. So we changed our methodology when the Town Accountant had done that, she had looked at what we had received in the past and paid in the past in any fiscal year. And because of the timing issues, it was usually two payments instead of four. So basically, I think we appropriated, I think it was $36,000, and matched it with $36,000 in revenue at the annual town meeting. The, what we will receive and what we will pay out for four full quarters will be probably closer to about, probably around $78,000, somewhere in that realm. So what, one of the things we will need to do at the annual town meeting is, and it really has no direct effect on the budget, we'll have to increase our revenue accounts for, by approximately $33,000 or $34,000 from the income in, coming in from charter. But we'll also have to increase matchingly that appropriation account to pay for East Hampton Media. So right now, it looks like probably about somewhere between $33,000 and $34,000 will be the figure. But like I say, we'll be increasing revenues and increasing the actual, looking to increase the appropriations, so the net effect is zero.
Debit and credit, huh?
Debit and credit.
And will we see some kind of service enhancement as a result?
Not until we upgrade all this equipment. And that is one of the things that, you know, we've been waiting for the Director, the new Director to come on board for.
So that will be part and part, that's included in this increase?
No, it's a, it's a separate account. We've got about $50,000, which we had received in just capital funds to upgrade our equipment. to upgrade our equipment in this building.
So can we firm up when she's coming in in January? We got our meeting scheduled here.
Sure.
I mean, my preference would be the eighth or the twenty-second. I don't know about the rest of you.
Yeah.
And I'm the opposite of her.
Okay.
So it's...
So we're gonna be missing one of the board, but...
It's okay, for me.
Can you see which ones, they're available?
Yeah. I mean, even the third, I suppose. You folks available on the third?
I am.
Well, we were trying to make that just about the schools, right?
Was that just the schools?
I think so.
Yeah, that is just for the school. I have, no.
Okay.
The eighth of the twenty-second would be better. The third is kinda close to New Year's. I don't know what other town government East Hampton plans have.
Okay, so the eighth or twenty-second, just either Rini or Matt will be out. When does our contract come up for renewal with cable? Gritta Media Cable, is it coming up soon?
You had to ask that question, didn't you?
I know it's coming up pretty quick, pretty sure.
It's expired.
It's expired.
And, and I'm gonna go further into that, but yeah, it was one of the things that I had looked at, and it was interesting because while the actual contract that was signed was for one year and was expired, as I did some research on it, I had found that the Board of Selectmen had actually voted to approve a three-year contract, but was, what was actually signed was a one-year, a contract, so it has expired. I have brought that up to East Hampton Media. They, again, asked that if we could wait until the new executive director was on board to renegotiate or negotiate a contract extension.
No, no other reason to get her in here soon, so. Okay, thanks, Ed.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. East Street Bridge, there's nothing new on that?
No, I'm waiting to hear back from Mass DOT on a couple of things.
Okay. So new business action discussion, so quarterly board commission reports, Board of Health.
They should be over in a few minutes.
Okay. Water Department?
I knew there was gonna be, I knew Kurt was gonna be out of town, and Matt was just getting back in yesterday, so I didn't know. I didn't hear back from, if Matt was gonna be able to cover tonight.
And the transfer station.
And I thought they were gonna be here tonight, but I just texted Randall.
Feeling a little neglected here.
Yeah.
Did these folks confirm?
Health has, and I know they're meeting next door.
They're just getting here just now.
Yeah.
Okay. So, transfer station you thought would be here?
I thought would be here. I just texted Randall, and Randall answered back that he thought that previously that he had been told that combining the transfer station and his highway report was acceptable.
Right, we did talk about that.
When did he do his highway? Was it recent?
Couple months ago.
Yeah, a couple meetings ago.
Something in September, I remember.
So he's not coming, you're saying?
I don't think so.
Okay. We did Dorothy Putnam, okay, administrative assistant.
Yes, I have completed the interviews for the administrative assistant position. I do have a favorite, preferred candidate, very qualified person is retired, can work the schedule. So what I would like to do is have the board's approval to make an offer to them for the hourly wage which Velda was making, and see if they will take, take on the position. If the person says, yes, this particular person said they could start at any time, even, even immediately, so.
Great.
Yeah, I mean, from my point of view, I think it's his hire, so I'd go with his selection. Anybody have any issues?
I'm good with that.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, Ed, let us know how it goes.
Okay, absolutely. I will let you all know. Thank, thank you for allowing me to do that and move forward with it. Appreciate it.
Well, know right away, less Ed's stress level will go way down.
Ah, yes, it's been climbing lately, so I can't wait to have somebody in that outer office.
I just want to acknowledge how, even though it's a small town of only about six thousand people, that the amount of activity from the land purchase to the contracts for the employees to, you know, the, the alcohol licensing here is not an easy process. Just the amount of work lately has been an awful lot. I just wanna say how much we appreciate it, Ed.
Thank you, and I, I will firmly say that it was, and I'm glad I went through it, because I've never been through the hands, hands-on process of sending them out, getting them back.
Talking about the alcohol?
For the alcohol, for the common vics, I've always been on the other end. Someone sends them out, they come back. I review them to make sure that everything's in place before they go to the Board of Selectmen, so from that aspect, I'm glad I did it once. However, I will say fully that it was this licensing renewal process that made me really realize, I, we need somebody in that outside office.
Glad it worked out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other business that can't wait till this?
Board of Health is here.
Should we go back to Board of Health, 'cause they're here now?
Oh, hey Ben, how are you? Hi, sir. Okay, Board of Health Commission Report.
Ben Hogan, seventy-three Gilbert Road, evening, everyone. So, couple talking points, three pages worth, so bear with us here. All right, so for Title Fives, perk test plan reviews, we had a very wet summer, so that kinda put a, put a delay on everything, kinda held off on a lot of stuff, but since then, we've had forty-five Title Five inspections, twenty-seven perk tests, and seventeen plan reviews. For food services in town, all the food services have to get inspected twice annually. Some get more inspections than that due to issues and violations we find, so we've had eighteen food service inspections. These are all since July. All the permit applications for two, two thousand nineteen are in the mail. This includes food services and trash trucks, tanning facilities. We have eight trash haulers currently in the town, and every one of their trucks has to get permitted through us. This year, mobile food trucks became very popular. These also are inspected by the Board of, Health Department, and the Health Director inspected about twenty trucks. A number of the food trucks were at events at the Glendale Ridge Winery, also the Columbus Day events at Fletcher Farm on Gun Road. We've been meeting with the Hampshire Public Health Preparedness Coalition Planner and Coordinator. The Public Health Emergency Pre-Readiness Plan is required to be updated to comply with the new regional documents that are currently being used. Our Health Director is working on that, and that will need to be completed prior to March two thousand nineteen. Our Sharps program has been extremely successful, for, I believe we're one of the few towns that offer that level of service around here. Our residents are very appreciative of the service. The program has been more successful than we anticipated. In order to continue this very important service, we will need some additional funding to complete the year. We'll be meeting with finance shortly to work on that. This program keeps Sharps, so needles, out of the waste stream, and helps prevent trash workers and haulers from being stuck by used needles. We provide approved disposal containers, which can be picked up at the Board of Health, or at the Health Department at any time, and to any citizens, and then they return them to our Health Department, and we ship them out at no cost to the citizens. The septic betterment program, it's great if anyone in the town has a failed septic system and needs to update it, fix it. For the repair of residential failed septic systems, it's still very successful. Currently, we have twelve active betterment loans in process. Anyone with a failed residential septic system can see our Health Director for the information and application for the loans. Homeowners are billed on the third and fourth quarters of their tax bills, and the loan term is for ten years. There is no prepayment penalty.
What's the interest rate? I'm just curious.
I've, no, it's like, we can get back, we can get back to you on that. I mean, I, I personally, I have a friend who's personally used it, who had a new house with a system that failed in his front yard, and it was, house only a couple of years old, so I know he greatly appreciated it.
And did you say the repayment was over a ten-year period?
Ten years, yeah.
No interest?
No.
No prepayment?
No prepayment. And it comes out of the taxes, where their bill on the third and fourth quarters of their tax bills. If you've noticed, we, Board of Health, voted, and the Health Department has put up bright pink placards on the doors of the town hall to remind everyone that only service animals are allowed in town hall. We had a couple issues, so we had to put those placards up. So Maven, that's in Massachusetts, Virtual Epidemiologic Network. So we continue to do infectious disease surveillance and reporting. That's throughout the state. So far this year, the majority of reportable cases, which have been four of them, have been tick-borne illnesses that do not require follow-up or investigation, so that's a good thing. Maven allows local Boards of Health to be alerted to area outbreaks and helps track infectious diseases, so only having four cases is very good. Recently, we're looking in the joining, the Pioneer Valley Mosquito Control District. We're currently discussing submitting an article on the warrant for next special town meeting for that. And in two thousand sixteen, Massachusetts Legislature passed the Pay Equity Act, and it became effective on July one, two thousand eighteen. This allowed employees, including municipalities, two years to become compliant with the law. Guidance documents are on the AG's Attorney General's website, if anyone would like a detailed description of the law. Our board, we've been making every effort to comply with that. We've had a lot of discussions with, with Ed. Like to thank him for being extremely open and available with all these discussions, and we hope to be in compliance by December. And I'd like, if any of you guys have any extra questions about that, you can direct them over to Ed. And then I would also like to thank Matt, our new liaison. He's been great working with, constant conversations with, with our board, with him. I know him and I talk on a regular basis on stuff, and he's trying to understand what we do as much as he can, and he's also been a great help in helping us move forward and try to make our board more effective and efficient, so thanks to Matt. And then the Board, a special thanks to Jerry Swanson, our Health Director, and Nicole Fletcher, our Health Agent and Animal Inspector. They, they work their tails off in there, so they've been doing a great job, and I think that's it, so. Five percent on the betterment program.
It sounds like you've been busy.
Yep, constant, yeah, we're busy.
On the food trucks, twenties, seems like a large number. Do you have to inspect them every time they come into town, or once or twice a year?
I don't know the details. I, I know it's, I believe it's once, certain food trucks, every once, I believe, you know?
I didn't realize there was twenty food trucks in this area, but that's, that's great. They're good.
Yeah, they're getting real popular, especially with all the, the winery and all the local breweries.
When you said eight waste haulers in this small town, it just amazes me.
Yeah. That's not all the trucks they have, that's just...
Yeah, that was pretty amazing. Sounds like you folks have been busy. Great, appreciate it.
Question on the Maven, you mentioned four tick-borne illnesses, but they also log strep, A, B, flu, all that. So is that, do you get notices from the physician and primary practices, and is that inputted into Maven?
It gets, it gets inputted in, but the only time they contact us directly is, if it's, if it's reportable. So some, they'll put it in there, but they don't notify us. We'd have to go fish for that information.
So the doctors or primary practices put it directly into Maven?
It'll be, I believe the state puts it in. It goes...
It depends on what it is.
Yeah, but...
So it may be a lab that does it, it may be a physician, it may be the state.
So I know sometimes...
But the Board of Health does not have to import anything into Maven?
No. Sometimes, actually, sometimes a lab will notify the state before they notify the patient's doctor, so.
Any questions for Ben?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Town meeting date, Ed, any reason we shouldn't be setting a town meeting date in January? Okay, so, what's the notice requirement? Do you remember? Yes, sir. Two weeks? Okay, so we're, we're fine. So maybe we can take out the calendars. I guess my preference would be later in the month if where all you folks are around.
In January?
Yes.
Well, I am not around the last week of January.
Okay.
How about the fifteenth?
Go on the twenty-seventh through the second.
Twenty-seventh, okay.
I said the fifteenth.
Well, it's getting tight up.
It's a little, little close to get everything reviewed.
How about the first week in February? I mean, would that give us a little more time to advertise and...
I'm fine with that, yeah.
So February fifth?
Yeah, that sounds...
We have a board meeting, well, that's the normal schedule, and that'd be fine.
Hold it before that.
Loop right in, yeah. So February fifth. Yeah, we can't have it without you. We, we could, but it wouldn't be as much fun.
And I will check with the town clerk to make sure it works with her also.
That would be great, just let us know if it doesn't.
Robert, seven, six, seven o'clock? Because there was a time thing last time, that's seven o'clock.
Seven PM, okay. And we'll do our board, Select Board meeting at six o'clock at the school?
Yeah, that sounds good.
And just one reminder, since we do have a temporary town clerk, as the first order of business under state statute, even though you've appointed that person to fill in, will be to actually, town meeting will have to elect that person as, or vote that person as town, as town clerk for the town meeting.
So that'll be right on top of the agenda, okay? Yes, sir.
Robert Floyd, fifteen East Street. I have a procedure for that, so I'm all prepared and I've...
So if it's on the agenda, you'll take care of it?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything else that can't wait till December twentieth? No, we, we put that up ahead, yeah. Anything again? No? Okay, so let's go on to the PCFs and the PRFs. These were done, signed off on the Finance Committee last night. Ed, do you have them there?
Yes, I have the originals here.
Okay. So one, the PRF is for the interim police chief for the Police Department. Another PRF is for the temporary van driver for the COA. So let's, let's separate the PRFs from the PCFs. So can I have a motion to accept the first two PRFs?
I move to accept the first two PRFs for the police, interim police chief and temporary van driver.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Cast those down, please. Thank you. Okay, now the PCFs. Uh, this, Temporary Town Clerk, Lucy Dalton, term to expire May twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. She's in the town clerk's office, obviously. Next one is temporary and a part-time on-call plow driver, equipment operator, Roger Ball, senior, Highway Department. Roger couldn't stay away. We need, we need skilled...
We do.
Operator, so that's great that he's willing to do that. Next one is emergency, temporary, and full-time truck driver slash equipment operator, Jeremy La Rochelle, Highway Department. He received the first of two licenses required. And the last one is part-time Catherine Workman, EMT, Fire slash EMS Department.
And I thought you were gonna put that one off until December twentieth.
Yeah, that's the one that we have the backup for here. So we wanna put that off till next time, so we all get a chance to look at the document that was handed out today, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna take that one off the table for now and put it on the twentieth. So can we have a motion for...
I move to accept the, the PCFs, which are Lucy Dalton, Roger Ball, senior, and Jeremy La Rochelle.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, licenses and permits. Common Vicular License, uh, Bishista Orchards, Big Y World Class Market, Cumberland Farm Store Number oh-one-nine-eight, Dunkin' Donuts, we're passing over Rite Aid, Sheldon's Ice Cream, and Subway. All the paperwork, fees, and everything are in order, Ed?
Yes, they are.
Yeah, because we have a motion to accept all that I just read?
So moved.
A second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now alcohol and other. Camp John Association Incorporated, which is alcohol, common vicular, entertainment, co-op, and other. AP Steakhouse, alcohol, common vicular, entertainment, Hyazanals Restaurant and Pub, alcohol, common vicular, co-op, other entertainment. Uh, we're getting rid of the regular entertainment, because they're not applying for that this time. Southampton Country Club, alcohol, common vicular, entertainment, the Tin Can Alley Loung- Tin Can Alley Loung- Lounge, that's right, huh?
Yes.
Jeez. Alcohol, common vicular, entertainment, co-op, other entertainment, Westlake Gourmet, alcohol, common vicular, Hamill Family Farm LLC, Glendale Ridge Vineyard Wine Pouring Permit, common vicular, entertainment license, and Country Liquor Store, alcohol, Smidys Package Store, alcohol, Southampton Beer and Wine, alcohol, Pure Food Market, Wine and Malt Package Store, and Common Vicular License. So, do you have a motion to accept the ones that I read?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And New Car and Others, Harley-Davidson of Southampton, New Car and Entertainment License. Uh, have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Francine, did you sign the warrants?
Could I ask a question about, uh, this? So, Rite Aid was crossed out. Is there any type of license involved in selling pharmacy medications?
Pharmacy medication?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that we have their, uh, paperwork in, so we can deal with this on the twentieth.
That was just they didn't get their paperwork in on time, correct?
Right, exactly.
Okay.
And they've only got to the end of the year, but.
Yeah, no, only, only two, shall we say, that have kind of fallen out of the timeline are the Rite Aid and then also the Stop and Save up here.
Okay, and then McCall's Coffee, uh, they just got licensed, so they don't, they're not on the calendar?
Yeah, it would not be a renewal, it would be a new.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, Francine, would you like to read those?
Okay, warrant number W nineteen dash twenty-one C and the amount of three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Warrant. W nineteen dash twenty-one B reversing the three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Then warrant P nineteen dash twenty-two for two hundred sixty-nine thousand, six hundred fifty-four dollars and fifty-four cents. PD nineteen dash twenty-two for forty-six thousand, six hundred forty-three dollars and seventy-four cents. P nineteen dash twenty-two C for a hundred and fourteen dollars and nine cents. PD nineteen dash twenty-two A for a hundred ninety-eight thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollars and thirty-four cents. PD dash twenty-two C for nine dollars and twelve cents. W nineteen dash twenty-three for six hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred forty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. And then a reversal in warrant nineteen dash twenty-three V for ten dollars and thirty-one cents.
Just enough time for us to sign everything, thank you.
Yep.
The other documents requiring signature, this is the Audit Engagement Letter, Melonson and Heath for three years. That was the letter Vicki brought forward. We had some question about whether we wanted, we could get out in the second and third year, and they added some new language to it that Ed had sent me, and I reviewed it. Uh, so now we need to sign it, correct, Ed?
Correct.
Okay. Any question on that? You remember the conversation we had about?
Yeah, you were asking particularly as an exit clause, is that, was that added?
That's what we added in there. Ed took care of that, so, thank you, Ed.
My pleasure.
Okay, I guess the question, a couple of questions I had, um, uh, in terms of, um, tests for documentary evidence, what exactly? Do they do timesheets? What, what are they looking at when they do their tests?
Depends on what categories you fall into. For, uh, salaries or whatever, yeah, they will actually look at timesheets. They will go back in, take a look at, um, not only the timesheets, what's been authorized for pay rates? Should there be a union agreement? Uh, they may go back to PCFs if there is no union agreement. Um, so that's what they will do on those. Uh, they will usually test three or four, uh, items on the procurement side, uh, and they will usually try to, uh, test them in a variety of ways of some things that will fall into, uh, receiving the quotes, which is over ten thousand but under fifty thousand. Um, and, uh, also, um, making sure that, um, they also test, uh, items that fall into, the, uh, sealed bids of over fifty thousand dollars. So, it really depends on which category that they're, they're doing and what, what they look at. But, uh, they're, uh, very thorough, because I've gotten stuck a couple of times on, uh, the salary end of, uh, things when I thought I had everything, uh, together and signed off by pre, uh, Board of Selectmen's in other town and found out that, okay, there might have been someone that received a stipend or someone that came on the books through the year that, uh, we missed and didn't have, uh, actually a signed approved, uh, wage.
Okay, and then the other question is the test for physical existence of inventories. Is there a dollar amount on that? Anything above a certain amount?
I would have to, have to.
Or just random?
There would be, and I can't remember what we've established, but I'll find out and let you know.
Doesn't the state classify a thousand dollars or above as a capital asset?
I can't remember if it's a thousand or five thousand, it's one of the two thresholds.
Yeah, I know it used, I know what we do, it's a thousand, but between a thousand and five thousand, the department self-inventories, but we still hit it at an audit, but, yeah, if you can check, that would.
I'll be happy to.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Now, where, where is the new language that was added? It's not really highlighted.
It's under fees.
Yeah, it's right there, highlighted.
Oh, okay.
There's a little asterisk.
Right. Yeah.
Okay. I didn't think that was what we talked about, but that's okay.
It just, yeah, we went back and forth, just allows us, if we don't want to go in the second or third year, to get out of it, yeah. So, uh, can we have a motion to accept the engagement letter and for me to sign it?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
But that'll get back to us with its other specifics as well. I mean, it's just points of clarification, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And let's do approve October twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen. Thank you. Has everybody read them?
No, those, you're gonna.
Part of it was.
Yeah. Oh, I see.
Single sheet of the article.
There we go, that's what I see.
There's a couple of announcements that remain.
It's just the twenty-fifth, right? That's all we're doing?
Yep. And not the executive session ones?
Right. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen.
So, a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One more time, can you pass that, please? Okay, so, we know the meetings are December twentieth, January third, which is HRHS-specific, and January eighth, and January twenty-second. Now, we have open time for the public. Does anybody, Jim?
Hi, Jim Palermo, sixty-eight Glendale in Southampton. I have just two things I wanted to, uh, mention. The first is that there's an organization called the School Choice Committee that has been soliciting various municipal, uh, legislatures and select boards to celebrate the School Choice Week. Uh, and I just wanted to express my concern that such a proclamation not be passed, because it's a very controversial issue. And I believe that in the absence of some kind of objective evidence, that a majority of the people in town would support such a proposition, that it should not be proclaimed. And another serious note, um.
Just as a footnote, I don't believe that we've received anything on that, so.
Oh, okay.
There is some, there is some history to, um, this board taking, not when I was on the board, but prior to that, there was some history of that happening. That they addressed that issue.
Yeah, it, well, it's beside the point.
Yeah, unless it runs up there, yeah.
I won't editorialize, but.
Thank you.
And I, and I should mention, I'm saying this as an individual and not a member of any committee I belong to. The other thing is a little bit more troubling to me. At the May first town meeting in two thousand eighteen, uh, we passed a new bylaw that would preclude, uh, the moderator at a town meeting from preventing a speaker from speaking on the grounds of hearsay or excluding hearsay evidence. Subsequently, on two occasions, um, I believe that I heard the moderator declare publicly that because of language in the Attorney General's letter referring to section seventeen of the statute, that, uh, nothing is going to change, that he will continue to prevent people from referring to newspaper articles or engaging what he considers to be hearsay evidence. Uh, I called the Attorney General's Office for clarification in that I could find no case law to support either position. But what concerned me most is that the way I read the statute, section seventeen, is, uh, to ensure that the moderator has the authority to preclude indecorous conduct by a speaker. I was told by the Attorney General's Office, which, by the way, my telling you this is hearsay, but that we would need, uh, an opinion from the, from a town council. I, I just feel very strongly that the town meeting is a legislative branch of our municipal government, that it's an exercise in democracy, this being a governmental body, that there is such a thing as protecting the right of free speech and the right for individuals to come and petition their government. So, and I also believe, based on my reading of the moderator's handbook, that complex rules should not be applied at the meeting. And the rules of evidence are incredibly complex. So, with that in mind, I would either wish that we would consult with our town council in such a way that both sides could fully articulate to the town council their support or opposition to this. And in the absence of that, I would invite the select board to consider changing town councils to go to a local attorney, so that having that person appear at a town meeting would be less expensive. I'm assuming that our council in Boston charges us for transportation and so forth.
I don't know if they do all the time, but, uh, we could check on that.
Yeah. But it's, you know, I, I keep saying, hearsay rules are not being applied properly. They have no place at a meeting. The Supreme Court published the rules of evidence, uh, to cover judicial proceedings. And yet, people seem to disregard that, and, you know, it's frustrating, especially after all the work I, I did to try to get that bylaw passed. But, I mean, that's all I have to say on the matter, but, uh.
So, I guess, because you're saying your interpretation was such and such, and we have the moderator here, it'd be interesting to see if you'd be interested to come up, make sure Jim's interpretation is the same as what you're hearing. You're not willing to come up and?
Could I say something?
Yeah.
Um, when we submitted the warrant article to the Attorney General, um, I believe it was Attorney General's Office that voiced concern about the warrant article and spoke to the authority of the moderator.
Right.
To run the meeting.
Right.
So, um, I don't think there was necessarily any resolution, because the warrant article passed, and yet, we were then told after the fact that, um, there was some problem with it. So, did we take any action after that, or where, where does it stand then? I'm asking, actually, you or Ed, um, if.
I think this is why you're here.
Well, yeah, and, and really, um, the letter from the Attorney General's Office said that they approved the bylaw. And then there is another paragraph that they added gratuitously.
Yeah.
Saying that the moderator, and I agree with this fully, has the authority to control the town meeting and to either grant permission to a speaker or to withhold it. My limited research, because I'm not an attorney, suggests to me that that section seventeen was really intended for indecorous conduct. But as long as somebody is, you know, speaking within five minutes, has good faith belief that what they are saying is relevant, uh, you know, things of that nature, that the town moderator should not, I'm not saying he cannot, but should not, preclude that speaker from finishing what they're going to say within the five minutes. If the town moderator says your time is up or corrects the person for naming somebody in the audience or starting an argument, the town moderator has absolute authority to say, no. The case I found, um, a person persisted after being warned about indecorous conduct. The town moderator ordered that the person be, uh, held by the Police Department, and, and they were, they were confined in a room until the meeting was over. And that's the town moderator's rule. I mean, I, I believe in orderly meetings, and I think, frankly, our moderator does a good job of that. But on the other hand, citizens have the right to, to address. And how do you prepare for a meeting without knowing the rules of evidence? I mean, which, for example, if I might, with your permission, may I just use one example? In your introduction, you say that experience tells us that speaking beyond five minutes, you don't persuade anybody. That's hearsay. And not only that, it's demonstrably false. I mean, if you ever go to a trial, a judge trying to convince a jury doesn't try to sum up in five minutes. But it's okay. I mean, it's a meeting, you know, it's not a court trial. Uh, if I were to say something like that in a court of law, I would have to call in an expert in the field who has conducted studies, establish that they're an expert, and then have them disclose the research that they relied on to reach that conclusion. And the other side would call a, a witness or an expert to refute that. I mean, that's how the rule of evidence works in the courtroom. To quote a newspaper article and have that called hearsay, I would object too, because if somebody says, I called the town clerk's office, excuse me, I'm getting a cold. I called the town clerk's office, and the clerk told me this and that, that's hearsay. You can't, you should call the town clerk at a court. Did you say that?
Yeah.
Was that within your purview? Newspapers are our source of information, you know? My neighbor plays loud music. It's hearsay. How do you know that? What are you basing that on? What's loud? So, and again, I was a hearing officer, it was part of my duties with the National Labor Relations Board, and we were only guided loosely by the rules of evidence, because we were a non-adversarial proceeding. If it had, if we were trying unfair labor practices, then we, which I'm not a lawyer, so I couldn't do, but then they were bound very strictly by the federal rules of evidence, in which hearsay is the. in which hearsay is defined. It's a very complex area of the law. And what I'm more concerned about is preserving democracy, which is under assault on so many levels nowadays, that I think this is an important issue.
So Jim, can I just interrupt you for one second? So what I'm hearing you ask is that this board have our attorney look at both sides of this, so the warrant article passed, the Attorney General acknowledged that, put a, you know, additional comment.
Right.
Preserving in some way the authority of the moderator. And so what you're asking is that both sides of the interpretation then go to our attorney, and you're also asking us to consider hiring a local attorney and not KP Law. Is that what I'm hearing?
Two separate things, though.
Yeah, yeah, but that, is that what I'm hearing, your request from us?
Yeah, with regard, right. Yeah, with regard to, you know, I have nothing against our current legal counsel, but we have not been permitting counsel at our meetings because it's expensive. So I'm saying to save money, why don't we get local counsel?
That sounds like a topic we can put on an agenda to discuss.
Yeah, I mean, if, if it's warranted.
I mean, just, I want to say something here, because being new here, and I'm curious, Robert, like, do you, do you refute any, any of this? I mean, my naivety, I guess, is probably, like, everybody can realize this, but do you refute, because some, a lot of what you're saying.
Excuse me, Robert Floyd, 15 East Street. The town moderator's authority is only in a town meeting. This is not a town meeting. Town meeting is not a court of law. Town moderator has access to the town attorney if and only if the town moderator needs some legal advice. Town moderator does not have to, at his own peril, her own peril, take the legal advice, but the town moderator runs the town meeting.
I understand that.
Thank you.
I guess I didn't answer the question.
I guess I didn't answer.
Yeah. I don't refute what he said. The only thing is that if somebody's acting illegally or violating constitutional rights of the citizenry, that's a matter for town council to know about. We also have rights as citizens. And I went out and bought the, the book, The Town Meeting Time, and in here, and I haven't marked it specifically, but it says that, you know, elaborate rules which would be appropriate at more formal proceedings should not be used. And, and I fully agree that a town moderator has broad discretion, has enormous authority, and I commend Robert for the job he does overall. But there, I mean, for example, we're supposed to be able to face the audience, but we're made to go over to the side. I'm not going to make a big deal out of that. But the idea of being able to freely come to a town meeting and to the best of a layman's ability to stand there in the legislative process of the town and make their case, providing they're following the rules. And if you read the bylaw that was passed, it says, you know, providing that you're, you're complying with all the rules of, of the, of the meeting, you're free to say stuff. You know, there's, well, I don't want to go on too much, but the rule, even excluding newspaper articles, it's not applied evenly. I remember several years ago, we were talking about making the treasurer collector an appointed position rather than elected. And at that time, Holyoke was having a horrible problem with their treasurer, I believe, who was working on, on city time, but in the private sector, and because he was elected, nothing could be done about it. And the speaker, it was not me, as a member of the, of the council, or the select board, rather, was cut off saying that that reference to the newspaper article was hearsay. That's ridiculous.
So you're saying the, the rules are too tight for the average person to go up there, express their opinion without?
What they truly believe.
What they truly believe.
Yeah. And, and how would you prepare not knowing what the town moderator would consider to be hearsay?
Well, that was the reason why, respectfully, that was the reason why I asked you, because it's almost, to me, it's almost like what you interpret that law to be, which is what I was asking you.
Everything relies on the moment and what is said as far as what the moderator reacts to what's happening on the floor.
Yeah, and, and I would say that's silly. As a former hearing officer and federal agent, that's silly. It's not what you feel. The person has the right to speak. And, yeah.
But we've got to decide on that, but thanks for bringing that up.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess the question is, do we want to take Mr. Plarmo's recommendation and bring these two decisions together with our town attorney to give us a decision on?
Well, didn't our attorney review the warrant article before it went to the town meeting anyway?
Boy, that was Bob, wasn't it? At the time, yeah.
No, I think that one was me.
Was that you?
Yeah, but KP Law, I'm talking about, didn't KP Law review all the warrant articles before town meeting?
They do.
Don't they have to?
They should. I'm trying to remember when that was submitted and if they did.
But it sounds like it's.
They have to go back and look. I believe they did.
To the best of my knowledge, they did, because there were changes made to comply. And that was in May of 2018.
Is that what it was?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that correct? Was you?
Huh?
Is that what you called to?
Robert Floyd, 15 East Street. The facts of the matter is, or facts are, when a citizen presents a, an article for a town meeting, the select board, the moderator, and the legal counsel cannot change a word of it, no matter how improperly written it is. It can be amended on the floor, but no article that's a citizen's petition under that umbrella is commented on by legal counsel.
So that was.
The law protects the wording, not what the select board think it might say or should say.
Okay, that's good clarification, thank you.
So our attorney reviewed it beforehand, the citizens passed it, the Attorney General passed, you know, okayed it, but then made a comment about the moderator's authority. So what I'm hearing the issue is, is whether or not the moderator is applying it properly.
Right.
Right.
That's the issue.
That would be a.
More specifically, the, the Attorney General approved the bylaw. And then added.
Little caveat.
In the set, a caveat, but you also have to be aware of section seventeen, which gives the moderator the discretion, blah, blah, blah. And again, looking at the statute itself, it's not apparent, but if you look at the dicta within the manual, or you, you look around, it seems that section seventeen is used to control indecorous demeanor, if somebody's not complying with the rules.
So, do we want to? You got it here? Okay, this is the letter from the Attorney General dating, dated August thirteenth, or August third, 2018. No person shall address the town meeting without leave of the moderator, and all persons shall, at the request of the moderator, be silent. If a person, after warning from the moderator, persists in disorderly behavior, the moderator may order him to withdraw from the meeting, and if he does not withdraw, may order a constable or other person to remove him and confine him to some convenient place until the meeting is adjourned. Disorderly seems to be what we're looking at here.
Yeah.
And the question is, is hearsay disorderly, I would think? So the question, do we want to give this information back to the attorney and have our attorney look at that caveat and try to come up with an opinion on what that allows and doesn't allow? Because that's where the, it seems to be hinging on the caveat the Attorney General's office gave. Interesting one. I mean, from a personal point of view, if hearsay is anything except when it comes from me directly out of my mouth, I, I don't know how I would get up in front of the, the town and say anything, you know?
Yep.
I can't say I met Matt outside and Matt said this, because that's hearsay, kind of takes away from any kind of backup that you have. That's my personal opinion.
If I may.
Have to introduce yourself.
Robert Floyd, 15 East Street. I'm, I'm, I'm good with that. The, and I don't want to get into a discussion or debate, but I'll say a couple more sentences on this. The concept of a town meeting is for an individual, every citizen, to have the right to speak, to have the right to say what they feel, not to quote other people, not to quote newspapers, not to quote books with somebody else. One cannot get up and read a letter of one spouse who's sick, or their mother, or their child who couldn't be there. They have to speak what they feel on an issue. And the concept is, and I use this as an example, if somebody wants the sign painted blue, then the next person need not get up and say they want the sign painted blue. We've heard that opinion, we've heard that feeling. And I seek the audience, I beg for participation, for everyone, change it from what it was historically, so everyone has an opportunity. What I, as a moderator, have an issue with is somebody quoting a newspaper article, which are proven to be inaccurate. And you'll see daily, weekly, something that was misquoted or mispresented and is a correction. So because it made a newspaper article, doesn't necessarily be true. And you've all been interviewed by the Gazette, as I have, God bless the Gazette, God bless the Republican, but I have many.
Are you saying they'll quote accurately?
I have many articles that, that didn't quite do it. You know, wasn't quite what was said, and it was taken out of context or whatever. So that's the, the, the general concept, is for someone not to, any audience hear someone's memory of what an article said, to quote the article, that again, may or not be true. Somebody needs to hear what somebody's feeling is on an issue.
Well, so all of that's true, but how come that article can't play into how, the reason why they feel the way that they feel?
I haven't spoke or gone against that bylaw, by the way.
I, I guess.
So as long as someone doesn't attribute something to a source, they can basically say it, I mean, modify it or, you know, not use it as a direct quote, but they could basically say in essence what was in that article without referencing the article per se.
General feel, but again, under the umbrella of feelings. And that's why there's no naming of names, or saying my neighbor said this, or we on the street feel, that's okay for here, but not in a town meeting. So when somebody stands there, they're speaking themselves, representing themselves, and not their neighborhood, or not their ball club, or social gathering, or anything like that.
But that will or will not make it any more accurate, it's just not citing a source is, you're saying it kind of, it doesn't represent what you're saying, their own opinion.
It's, it's difficult to talk in black and white, because during a meeting, you know, this can shift, that can shift, there's a quickness sometimes to it, where somebody's saying a sentence and, hey, there's, there's no point in bringing up something that was a sentence and it's long gone. When there is announcement that this is a newspaper article somebody's reading or quoting from, that's a separate issue. And as a moderator, everybody could be quoting newspaper articles. So if you allow one person to do something, you then allow everyone that right to do it.
But I mean, they have five minutes only, so I mean, it seems like the public forum is to let people speak their minds in five minutes, but if we can't quote anything or, or say this is what I feel because I heard that, it seems like it restricts you.
Well, you don't say, you don't need to say why you feel a certain way.
But I mean, the average person, that's how they talk. That's how they talk.
That's my, I'm, I'm, where I'm with him is, is that the average person doesn't know these rules.
Well, I go through this whole, I go through this.
They want to be able to talk.
This whole preamble.
But I.
And I'm there to guide it. When somebody gets up to make an amendment, I'll say, I'll help you through that amendment. Do you want to amend it? Okay, here's a suggestion. So I'm not gaveling them down because.
But to me, I'm sorry, but be honest, the, the rules in the beginning are fairly complicated, and the average person out there doesn't understand. And I gotta be honest, of, of the issues I hear, this is the biggest issue. Why did they stop him? Why did they stop her? I mean, people want to hear, I think, others' opinions.
Oh.
And as long as it's within five minutes, it seems reasonable, in my opinion.
That's your opinion.
Right.
And so there are opinions.
Right.
Right. So it's what works for a town meeting, and that's the moderator's call, to see what works for the temperament of the town. I go to other town meetings to see what they do and how they do it, and it's like, whoa, I'm going to use that, or hmm, we do it better.
But if people are going up and talking, and the audience is intently listening and not moaning like, yeah, get rid of them, doesn't that indicate the audience is interested in, in what's going on?
I've had people wanting to, to get rid of the speakers because of the way they rambled, but they weren't breaking any rules, they have an opinion, and I'm not.
And they have a clock, five minutes.
But then they can come up again.
And then someone calls the question.
They can, they can, they can come up again, and then they're also, I'm getting dry mouth, they also, some order here, they also can respond to a question, which is above and beyond the five minutes. So it's a, it's really pretty liberal, since I don't use a gavel. You go to some meetings with a gavel, and there's not an opportunity to, to finish the sentence sometimes.
I guess it's just, the freer their speech, the more information.
But the point is, I have not gone against the bylaw.
Technically, no, but I mean.
I have not gone with technically or not.
Well, I mean, if somebody wants to have a.
You're missing the point, John.
A reference to something.
Since that bylaw was created, I've not gone against that bylaw.
We haven't had a town meeting since, so he couldn't go against it.
Yes, we have.
Yeah, one, the lamp.
Yes, we have.
Oh, yeah.
All right, check the dates, I got them.
Okay, thanks.
I, I watched the.
Last time up.
My last time, I'm sorry. I believe that Mr. Floyd, in his opening statement at the last town meeting, said there will be no hearsay in his opening statement. But also, what could you quote? I mean, I could bring in Einstein's theory of relativity and say, you know, it's E equals M C squared. And, and we don't, there's too much feeling. We really have to have some facts. And to say, based on what I read in a newspaper, it seems to me, blah, 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 is expressing my feeling, but I had a teacher get very upset if you said, I feel. He said, it's either I believe or I assert, but who cares what you feel? But just one more point, and I'll sit down. At one of the town meetings, John Yu and Charlie represented the people from Sattlers or Statlers, who were looking for a variance in the zoning law for their store.
Yeah.
Okay. And the owners of the property were not able to make the meeting. So Yu and Charlie spoke on their behalf and said, made statements about what their intentions were to use the property and so on, that's hearsay. I, I commend you for doing it. It was a town meeting, and you were their representative, and you stood up and you said, as a town select board member, my constituent has told me this and I'm acting as their advocate. But that was all hearsay.
And I think the issue is, our moderator has a point that he can't let the meeting just go, and you have a point where you want people at least have a reasonable.
Free speech.
No, no.
Speech time.
And I agree, we shouldn't let the meeting go. But as it stands now, we get five minutes, okay? And it has to be relevant. In fact, if you have that thing that, the bylaw itself, it says all the, all the conditions that the speaker must meet to conform to the moderator's role. But, you know, it's, it's, the rules of evidence do not apply at anything outside the court.
Thank you. So we heard both sides, obviously, there's points on both sides, and so what do we want to do with this?
Well, I, for the expense, if we have a lawyer show up and sit there in the meeting, what authority would that have over a town moderator? He, it's his meeting, he's running the meeting, I mean, it's not like we could change anything.
It would be a legal opinion on the topic.
Right, which they can review after the fact anyway, it's all taken.
Right.
I don't know, I just, I appreciate Jim, and I'd like to have people speak, but I think it's a fine line walking between the two, but like I said, having a lawyer there, it's the town moderator's meeting, and he's running it. We're all just citizens, and I don't see where that could make a difference. I don't know, my, my.
Sometimes.
My, my.
I just want to understand. I just want to understand it.
If we could...
You should sit closer here, Jim.
Ask town council now to refer to case law to decide whether or not Section 17 refers to indecorous behavior. And whether, under the law, in the attorney's opinion, it is correct to preclude a speaker based on hearsay. And I believe that if they refer to the moderator's manual, and general knowledge of what the law is, that they would be able to form an opinion. And I'm saying, in the absence of that, we should have an attorney present, because you can make a point of order.
Oh, in the absence of that, okay.
Yeah.
I'd be fine with that, I'd be fine with that clarification.
You want to make that motion?
Yeah, and Virginia, go ahead.
Is this on this topic, Virginia?
I, Virginia Lee Hart, 27 Fulmer Road. I would not look at the caveat as talking about somebody's opinion. We don't often have anyone taken out of town meeting. But that is the part that allows that to happen. And yes, once in the past, we did. Not when Robert was the moderator, but prior to that, the moderator asking three times to take his seat and quit yelling. And that is what I see, is that sec, that thing that they've thrown in there, not for someone worrying about hearsay. That's my opinion.
But I think the important one, opinion of moderator who's running the meeting, you know, how he views it, obviously, is important. Okay.
But that, that has only happened once in all the ones I've been at.
That means the meetings are run well. Do you want to come in on this, Barbara? Go ahead.
Barbara Flamm, 20 Cook Road. I think being a town moderator is not an easy job. You're before the public, you're trying to understand and include all of the public body that's there to be respectful to the speaker, who may not speak eloquently, may not have an extensive vocabulary, but can convey their point of view as best they can. It's very important. The moderator does not know the point of view of any individual speaker that stands up to speak, but has to think on their feet, know what the rules are. And I think we are very fortunate in Southampton. Our town moderator is elected, and has been serving our community for many years, and I think he does a really good job.
Thank you. That was good. So, or do you want to make that motion?
I mean, only so much as that, I mean, the real question for me in my head is that, are... And I think that the answer is already yes, so I feel like it would be almost redundant. Like, people should be allowed to have a free speech moment in front of the public on what their true feelings and thoughts are on the subject at hand. And I guess that the only thing that I'm rattling around in my head, and I think, is whether or not you allow for that. And I think that the answer's already yes, and so...
As long as there's no hearsay.
I mean, but I think Jim would say that he's got examples of, of it being no. And that's, I kind of, I basically just summarized the last fifteen minutes, but do we need to clarify this, so that people have their, their right to speak at a town meeting? That's really what the question is.
I mean, if we're going to make the motion, we should make the motion short, so it just addresses that particular aspect of it, so we don't get into a long legal bill.
The aspect of getting...
Well, the, the section seventeen...
Right.
Indecorous. I had to look it up, Jim, come on. Jeez.
Go ahead, Ed, yeah.
Just opinion. Okay, make it, you say make it short and specific, so we don't have a large legal bill. So then, the next person challenges it under something else, and comes forward and says, well, I think he, the moderator, might be incorrect under this, would you send it off to legal?
Yeah, I mean, you're just going to be...
Boom, 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 boom.
But we got an opinion already from the AG, and it was just that caveat there, as I understand it, that we're questioning, not the whole thing, right?
I'll flick it.
Yeah, come on. So, again...
We're looking for clarification.
We're just looking for clarification on one segment, because the AG already said it was okay. And it's just that one section. Am I correct, Jim? That's what you were asking? You don't have to get up, that's okay.
Yeah, no, the Deputy Attorney General, with whom I spoke, said that they are under obligation to present, you know, the full law. And that's why they put that other section in there. To interpret it would require our private, private counsel.
Okay, so that's what we're looking at. Okay. So, you want to go with that? And get it done with, settled, hopefully?
I think, if I might, I think the motion would be to ask whether or not...
I'm going to make you come up here again if you go into a long...
But I would say, this motion would be to ask the town council whether the rules of evidence, especially the rule of hearsay, are, has any place in a town meeting?
Okay, somebody like to make that into a motion? We need to move on with this, one way or the other?
The only way I see this actually getting resolved, I don't think just that question is enough for our attorney to actually say whether or not the moderator is following the warrant article as it was passed. The only way to do that is to tell, ask our attorney, which would end up being somewhat expensive, to take the video, which is right on our website, from the previous town meeting, and watch it, and see if there's any evidence that the moderator has in any way limited people speaking, and therefore contrary to the warrant as it was passed. And I'm not so sure that that's, I mean, you don't think that that's it?
No, I, I don't think that's the issue, really. I think the issue is more, can people get up there and, and speak their mind using...
References.
References, yeah.
But so, I mean, the other, the other thing to, to, and let me know if they can hear me at this point, I'm talking into this thing, is, is that, I mean, he has to react on his feet. Like, I mean, we have to, I mean, this is a fast-paced meeting that's moving extremely fast, and he's got to interpret these rules pretty much on a split second, and, and, and... It, it's got to be incredibly tough. I, I mean, more power to you for loving doing what you're doing. But at the same time, like, my only concern, as it seems like the rest of this board is, is that, I mean, people do have a right to speak. And I think that you know that, but...
By the way, it's hearsay that he loves what he's doing.
Yeah, sure.
Doing a good job.
Did you say that? Did you, you did just say that.
I will concede, Floyd does a good job, too.
I think we all concede that, yes.
Tammy Bloom is 298 College Highway. I think the, this was brought up at the May first meeting. The idea is that, at the January meeting, the first one that Ed was able to be at, is where problems happened. We elected a financial committee to talk, and things were happening that they weren't allowed to talk and asked to leave. So, that's the big thing, is we've, we've elected you guys, I'm elected for school committee, we've elected a finance department, and we really rely on what, their knowledge. And yet, they weren't able to speak. And, and that was the big thing, that January 2018 meeting, is where that, that special town meeting, that a lot of this happened at.
What if we, well, first of all, this has been taking almost forty minutes, but it says open time meeting, five minutes. But yes, what if we sit tight on this? We have a special town meeting coming up in Jan, January, or February, first week in February. The bylaw is in effect. If there's an issue there, now we can go to town council after the fact, and we can say, look, was this a violation or not? Otherwise, it's all, you know, you're theorizing everything. So, we're going to go to town council, we're going to say, well, maybe this, or maybe, they may say this, or may say that, but if we have a town meeting behind us that has been held since the bylaw was enacted, then we go to town council, going to opinion if there's an issue. I don't know, that's sort of the way I would go.
That is what I, I was thinking that minutes ago, the same thing. Because then you have, then you have examples of what people are concerned about, and whether or not they feel like their right to speak has been stifled. But then, of course, you're doing it after the fact, and you're only helping future town meetings. But at this point, like, I just, to Jim's point, I, I mean, we could adjust this anyways, but without doing any, some, without doing anything specific, we're doing it so generally right now that I'm not sure we gain anything from it.
Francine, what's your thought?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking... No, just witnessing people's specific behavior, not their behavior, that's not the right word, their dialogue, or their monologue, whichever the case may be, just to see how it is that they do use references. If that become, if that's the issue of, of the hearsay. I under, I understand both sides, and I don't want to, you know, we'd rather defer this to a third party to make a decision here, because really, I, I do. You could cite some very untrustworthy source, and that is just as legitimate as citing a very trustworthy source in, in the conversation. So I don't know then who makes the judgment, obviously it's the moderator, that at that time, that source is accurate or inaccurate. And that's, that's a tremendous burden. I don't, I don't have the answer there.
Well, the people in the audience are making that decision, whether to believe that person.
What I would say is, let me ask this question. Since the bylaw has been enacted, has there been a violation of somebody's free speech? Other than the hearsay you think he may, I mean...
Jim, you're going to have to come back to the podium, please.
No, it's just a question, I mean, I think we're only assuming, but if you want to answer it...
There was another town meeting.
You know, in, like, as Matt suggested, the problem with waiting till the next meeting is that...
You lose me.
This doesn't come up every meeting. You know, it's not that it happens all the time. With respect to what Francine said, you could rely on a bad source. Yeah, but I don't have to name my source and still have bad information in my head, and say, I feel there's no climate change, without telling you where I read it. Or saying, I do believe in climate change, without telling you where I read it. But if you identify, according to the newspaper article, and somebody in the audience has read the same article in the Gazette, and says, you know, Mr. Moderator, I read the same article, and I got a different impression. I mean, that's what debate is. I mean, democracy has never been a gentle sport. It's a give and take. And it should be conducted in a civil manner. But i- if you watch C-SPAN, which I admit I do...
You know you're being recorded, Jim.
Yeah, I mean, our legislators refer to documents that they've read.
Not a town meeting.
Well, okay, but a town meeting is a legislative thing, too, but...
Thanks, okay. So I guess we're going to close the, the public end of it if we can, so we can discuss it.
Maybe we just even ask a lawyer, generally, what do you think?
Thanks, Jim. I guess my concern is that the average person, like we talked about before, isn't going to know the rules. Jim may go up, I may now know how to phrase it, but the average person is going to go on hearsay, I think, and how do we deal with that?
Yeah, I, I think you're right about that.
So, so let's, I'm going to, if you don't mind, I'm going to, I'm going to just, I think we've heard everybody, and we've got a good... I don't want to be rude, Barbara, but I think we want to take a, a vote on this and decide where to go with it. So, do we have somebody that wants to put forward a motion that says, we'll let legal look at this, even the short part of it, to get a decision before the town meeting, so we can get some clarification to the board, as well as to the moderator?
Well, do we know specifically what they would look at? Would we literally say, like, is hearsay permitted? Is that, is that the specificity that we're looking for? Or, I mean, I don't want them to look over anything generally, because then we're just running a ticker on something that doesn't have any meaningful...
This is the AG's decision, and we want to look at the part where the moderator here basically runs the meeting, and does that involve hearsay? Is that, am I getting that right?
Hearsay, does section seventeen violate by law? Goes past.
So would you like to make that motion? Somebody's got to make a motion if we're, if we're going to go ahead, if not, we're just going to table it and go, so...
Well, you know, to seek clarification, that, that would be, that would be the word I would use. But again, it's, it, it is subject to the circumstances, and, and I think that's where the judgment of the moderator comes in. And so I, I don't know how you legislate judgment.
My guess is it's not going to be a clear answer. But that's what I guess.
But do, but do we want to get an answer, so we know?
I think it's going to be a very blurry answer, they're going to, they're going to, well, but that's...
Okay, so Francine, are you going to make that a motion? I, I'm pretty much not, not going to take any more public, if I can get away with that, because we're, we're just going... No, we're, we're all set, Jim, I'm sorry, I'm, yeah. Yeah, I don't want to be rude. No, we can't do that side, we can't do this side, I'm sorry. Well, it's not the town meeting, no. I'm sorry, we're not taking any more.
Point of order.
What's the point of order?
You have a five-minute limit for Speaker, Robert Floyd, 15 East Street. You have a five-minute limit for general open time to the public. And you have a policy that I've witnessed for fifteen years on not to vote on an issue somebody brings up at open time to the public. That's my point of order, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. So, does somebody want to make a motion so that we do this and get it done, or do we just want to let it drop?
I'd like to relook at the document that you have, that I haven't looked at since the last town meeting, and decide whether we want to put on the agenda for another meeting.
So why don't we continue this under old business? We'll look at it, and then we'll talk about it on the...
Oh, next meeting, yeah.
Very good.
I'll, I'll second that.
I don't, yeah, okay. You made that as a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, any, any discussion?
Yeah, so we're just going to put it on another meeting, next meeting, under old business.
And we're going to redistribute this decision.
Yeah, Ed, can you resend that? Can you resend that?
So that document has the copy of the warrant as it was passed by town meeting, and the comments by the Attorney General. Right?
I'd have to look at it, but we can get that, yes. This is the Attorney General.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? And a fun time was had by all. Thank you, everybody? Okay. We're going to be going into executive session, and we're not going to reconvene, so... Going into executive session, five sessions. One's Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Number Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. This is for Local 98, International Union of Operating Engineers, which is highway. Second session is under the same Mass General Law area for the police officers, New England Benevolent Police Association. The third executive session, the same Mass General Law for dispatchers, New England Benevolent Police Association. Fourth, same Mass General Law, to discuss, it's the same, for the East Street Bridge. And the fifth is for Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Number Seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements. It's approval of executive session minutes, October 25th, 2018, and November 13th, 2018. So I need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please?
Roden, aye.
Roland, aye.
Martin, aye.
Tishman, aye.
LeBri, aye.
Okay, we're going to close the general session, and go to open session with a five-minute recess in between. Thank you both.
Thank you.